Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, and we do have our city attorney that is participating by Zoom, and I think everybody else is in person. Wonderful. Okay, our activity reports, I'm just going to report that we will be going into closed session towards the end of the meeting to discuss an offer on real property located out in Heatherwood Flat addition out there, and that's my report. Everything else has been canceled.
Yeah, I've got nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Hertzberg?
I don't think we had anything much.
Frankie?
We had a joint planning board meeting.
Oh, that was interesting.
I won't agree or disagree.
Okay. Councilmember Gilmore?
We had policies and procedures. Right?
I thought that was earlier in the month. Maybe I also had a policies and procedures meeting.
And the EDA finance and the EDA.
Okay. And we do have minutes all of those two anyway, so, all right, then we do have a department head report, Mr. Mergen.
Okay, thank you. First of all, for all the trail enthusiasts, when you're going down Burr Street, just a reminder, the trail is closed on John Ginata Road. It is now detoured on the south end of the ball field. We'll loop around that over to the middle school, and then along the west side of the high school, back up to the intersection of Business 23 and the school approach there. Over in the parks, first of all, the concert in the parks, there was a couple date changes, actually pushed back a week. The first one will now be on July the 2nd, the 9th, the 16th, and July the 23rd. So that will be the dates for those. Everything else, the parks are all completely open at this point. The restrooms are open, signs are all posted, asking everyone obviously to keep their social distancing. I know Veterans Park was somewhat busy over the weekend, although all of our reservations for the shelter out there have been canceled up to July, correction, June the 5th is the first one. Other than that, they all, everybody felt they didn't want to go forward with anything, so. Let's see, and I guess the only question that I would have for the council at this point is, do we want to open the splash pad? And I guess we can discuss that when we get to the cova. We will have it ready. It's just a matter, do we want to open it up? The RV dump site is obviously open. I heard several people say it was extremely busy this weekend, as is the compo site. Just a reminder to residents, please, if you own a tree close to a sidewalk and it is hanging over, we do ask you to trim that so nobody gets hit in the head. I don't have to send anybody a letter asking them to do so. Our wastewater end of things, the irrigation system is up and running at this point. We did have several farmers asking for water, which is always a good thing compared to last year. And just a reminder again that the spring cleanup, now summer cleanup, is scheduled yet for July the 25th. So, any questions?
I see the, is it the fishing pier that's at Nodden Veterans?
Oh, thanks for reminding me. Yes, the fishing pier is on site. Hopefully, we will be able to get it together, assembled within a week or two, and actually have it put out.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay, and in addition to like the overhanging trees, I know you've been sending out letters about grass?
Yes, grass mowing also. We did send out probably, I think it's three, four letters already, and there's several more that will be going out very shortly if it's not taken care of.
I know mine sure grew over the weekend. Any other questions? Bill, is the audio okay?
Your audio was really good. Ron was really hard for me to understand most of the time. I hear, I've heard you and Len quite clearly some of the other stuff seems, I don't know if it's just a product of where people are in relation to their mics, but some of it gets pretty hard to understand.
Okay, well, try and keep that in mind. Ron will be in, down in the morning and fill you in. None. Any questions for Ron? Okay, if not, then we have the consent agenda before us as presented, the minutes from those five meetings on page one, the vouchers on page two totaling $318,863.03. That's it for the consent agenda.
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, second by LeBeau to accept. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, none, that carry. All right, then we have a visitor here tonight. We have Caitlin Gilk from the Painesville Girl Scouts, and she's going to present a project that she is working on for her Girl Scout Gold Award. You have the floor. Caitlin and her minions.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Gilk, Painesville Girl Scout, and I started my Gold Award project in October of 2019, and I've been working on it ever since. And the reason that I chose this project is because I saw other communities around us putting in AEDs save stations, and I thought that'd be good for Painesville to also have since other communities have been doing it. So, you can, my mom will hand out packets we have for everyone. And so, the first steps of my project were to go around Painesville and find all the AEDs that we have in Painesville, at all the local businesses and the school, things like that. And Tom Fred actually helped me do most of those, and helped me go around to all those businesses. And so, included in the packet is a map which shows pins of where all the AEDs are, and the list is ever growing. There's a couple places that with the COVID stuff that we weren't able to get on there, like the school I don't think is on there, but most of the other locations are on that map. And that information was given to the Stearns County Sheriff, who has all that information along with many surrounding communities, so we are all part of that now. And then, now I'll be giving a presentation on the save station. So, what would you do if someone went into sudden cardiac arrest in this room? Does anyone know where the closest AED is around here?
But I'd call Paul.
Closest AED is that?
Perfect. So, and I'll have some help. Can you go call 911?
I will.
And then, can you look for an AED?
Got it.
All right, so this is the person who just had a heart attack. We're going to start CPR while the other person is looking for the AED.
There was a save station, and it was outside this room, it was cold, locked up. This would be available 24/7. I opened it up, an alarm would sound, and it automatically called 911. I ran, run back to Caitlin and said, you've got the AED. If you want to take it, we'll take over CPR.
So, you just open up the AED that's inside, unwrap it, turn it on.
Adult patient. If the patient is a child, press the child button. Remove clothing from the patient's chest.
So, we cough the clothing.
Remove packet and apply pads. Press pads firmly on skin. Apply, press pads firmly on skin. Do not touch the patient analyzing heart rhythm. Do not touch the patient analyzing heart rhythm. Shock advised. Do not touch the patient. Everyone clear?
Have this, is the AED.
Press the flashing shock button. Shock delivered. Begin CPR. Ten. Twenty. Thirty. Give two breaths.
We'll not be getting breaths because of COVID. So, that is a demonstration of how an AED works. It's very simple, easy to use. There's instructions right with the device, so pretty much anyone can use it. So, if you would turn to your packet, there's some information that I can go over. So, 350,000 people go into sudden cardiac arrest in the United States, and only 5% of those live. So, with a save station, that rate goes up to 75 to 80% instead of just a 5% survival rate, and that's within eight minutes of getting help once they go into sudden cardiac arrest. So, now, this is the point where I ask the city for help. So, we ask that, I'm asking that you guys be a leader as a city and follow other surrounding cities who have done this, and help with some funding, and I'm working on getting different grants and asking other organizations to help fundraise for this project. And also, I need help forming a committee with those of you who'd like to be on that or you think would be good people to be on the committee, because we will work with Joel and Rich to map out, on the map that you guys were given, places to put these save stations, places where there are no AEDs or the AEDs are locked up, because that's the whole point of the save station, because after businesses close, you can no longer get into the building, and the save station is available 24/7. And in your packet, on the next page, you can see that it is regulated heated and cooled, so in the summertime, it gets really hot, cooled wintertime. It survives very extreme winter temperatures, so you don't have to worry about anything breaking or getting too cold and freezing. There's also an alarm that goes off once it is opened. It's a very loud alarm, so those around can hear and come to assist and help with that. There's also many other things that you can see on here that come with the save station. The other thing that most people ask is vandalism. The alarm helps with, obviously, people are going to notice a loud alarm going off, so vandalism shouldn't be a problem. Also, there's a camera that goes off and takes a picture of whoever opens it, so if someone would take the AED and not use it for the purpose it is intended to, please do get a clear picture of the person who took the AED. 911 is also dispatched once the save station is opened. So, just some other news is that the Community Initiative Foundation has agreed to sponsor a full station, so we do have one station covered in Painesville. And also, I know the Lions and Legion have said that they are both interested in helping fundraise for this, help fund this project. And some other information, Cold Spring has put in nine save stations, Richmond seven, Belgrade four, and St. Joe ten. Any other things to add?
And Wake Park seven.
And Wake Park seven. So, all around us, there's lots of different communities putting these in. Is there any questions?
What's your goal?
The goal for me is to do five for my project, and then, as Painesville needs more, or the more money we raise, the more we can put in. The more we have, the better.
Your first step is identifying where the, where the need is.
Yes, and that's part of the committee that we have to form.
Question for Tom or Paul, you know, the Neighborhood Alert Program, is that tied in with Code Red, or is that maybe going a little beyond the, you know, the use of Code Red?
I think that'd be going a little bit beyond.
Okay.
And I'm not sure we can be able to somehow tie this.
Yeah.
All right, I'll speak up. I was on the committee for Cold Spring and Richmond, and we had, we started with about five on the committee there between the two communities, and we ended up with about eight on the end, because we needed to make, we wanted to make sure a city council member from both communities was on the committee. And then, we also brought in one of the police officers, because Cold Spring and Richmond are conjoined jurisdictions for police, and we only needed one police officer between the two cities. And then, he was a huge advocate and a leader for it, to help out for that. Your advocate here would be Caitlin, you know, doing that. She just needs the assistance of business leaders and/or a city council member for sure, and/or concerned citizen that wants to help find adequate locations.
And the approval by you guys, obviously, to make sure that it's an okay location. So, that's why having one of you guys on there with your approval of where we put these save stations would be perfect.
If I could, if I could just interject a little bit, Joel Rudle, with Advocates Ralph, which is a nonprofit. We started this project last July, and we put 51 save stations out in the area with the support of Sheriff Soika. We currently are working with Sheriff Troy Heck in Benton County as we're moving east, and we're working down south with Sheriff Joel Bratt. The COVID thing kind of really upset things. We had meetings all lined up as we went around, and it just kind of shut us down in terms of what we were doing. We put more in, more of these in the United States than any other group did last year. Rich and I, Rich was on a phone call today with France where there's something that's going on. They have 250,000 of these in other countries. The United States doesn't have hardly any, one in Ohio, one in someplace else. So, this is new. Stearns County Sheriff's Department got a company by the name of GeoCom out of St. Cloud that we knew of, and for free, they took all these that we found, those 51 plus, we found 481 in Stearns County. There was none that we found in, in Painesville and Stearns County. That's why Caitlin kind of got on board, and she's done a wonderful, wonderful job in terms of doing that. We then took those 531 that we have now, and it keeps growing as people get them, they call in. If you call 911 and you get Stearns County Sheriff's Department saying, I have someone down with cardiac arrest, they know where you're calling from because they're taking your cell phone or wherever it happens. They now press a button, and an overlay pops up, and it says, the closest AED to you that you need is right here, and they send you to it. And with the ones that are outside, they're accessible 24/7. You can take an existing AED that you have and not purchase one, and put that inside the unit as well. We do have a grant right now, because our stories were on Carol 11 and Channel 5, one of the AED companies seen it, and they called us up and said, you guys are doing wonderful things, we're going to give you 50 AEDs for half price. So, the two components are the AED that goes inside here, and then the save station. So, it used to be that you could only get like three on the grant, because we had gotten $25,000 from Centricure, that went away. You guys are fortunate. They called us the other day, and said, we're going to give you another 50, and you don't have to limit it to three. So, if Painesville got behind this with Caitlin and said, hey, here's the deal, we know that they're here, and let's get this committee, let's put it together, let's take five or six, whatever we can get, get them and put them in place, and then we'd take care, we would, that would take care of that. There's two years monitoring inside there. Every day, save station calls the unit and says, how's the temperature inside and things? Is it, are the pads good, and are batteries good? When we found the 481s that we had, we actually hired somebody to go, look, we found that, 20% of them had bad batteries and bad pads, so someone didn't want to use them. It went to work. So, I think what Caitlin was asking for is some more support, that you guys would say, we would, we really want to help you with this project, and step up a little bit. So, we, if anybody got any other questions? Oh, by the way, for the police department, that photo's taken, we can send that to you, we can send it to the sheriff's department, whatever. In Cold Spring, they wanted it to go to them, because he said he could find out, he probably knew the person that took it that night. But Joel.
Caitlin, I just want to say thank you. This is a fantastic idea that I know has recently saved lives in the state, and there was an incident at a local or regional high school a while back where somebody went into cardiac arrest, and the AED saved that person's life. So, I'm behind this, as many stations as we can get, 100%.
Perfect. Yeah, one of the places I know a lot of people said was new baseball stadium, be a perfect place for it, then it'd cover the football field, all the sports fields, things like that would be a perfect place for it. So, we already have a couple ideas, just need help on that committee to decide exactly where we want to put them.
I'd be happy to serve on that committee too, if there's anybody else that's dying to do that on the council.
I'd love to, if I had the time. 110 regular?
They do, yes, they do have to have power, electrician, regular 110. A lot of times, this will, a lot of times, this will come, be mounted to a building, and the electrician will come and mount it right to that. They'll put a light above it as well. Check out ANW in Richmond, right by, right when you walk, right when you drive in, you'll see one right there. Another example is Casey's in Richmond. They, Casey's did not want it mounted on their building. I don't know why, but we got approval from Casey's to put it in their vicinity at Highway 23 and 22. Jill's and Casey's, they put a tall stand, so it's another option.
Just like the one behind you?
Yep, right there. So, you can, if there is, you can, you can tap into power if it's underground even, in a park type of thing. She is grateful that her grandpa, my dad, is an electrician, and we're going to probably tap into him and see if he can donate a few of them to wire them.
I don't think we paid for electrician, we haven't, I have, we mentioned a 51 we installed. What we found is that people embrace this project, the President's Lions Club, they're more willing to contribute basis if they're needed. Of the 51 we have in place, we paid for one electrician, the rest have all been volunteer. So, you get people that just embrace the project, say, I want to get involved. Go make presentations, people come out after a while and say, what can they do to help? So, that's the sort of thing that, it just keeps growing, and people get more and more excited about it. I mean, at the end of the day, the issue is we're here to save lives, and it works. This whole COVID thing, it's interesting that the AED really is the vaccine that cures a sudden cardiac arrest a lot of the time. So, all you have to do is have it accessible. When I got involved in this, I was amazed that, if you called Stearns County before, had no idea what any of the AEDs were. We identified all of them. All we're trying to do is make it easier to save lives. There's a lot of logical things that haven't been done for whatever reason, budget constraints, that sort of thing. But it's something that works, and, you know, over and over again, whether it be Cold Spring, Richmond, you found, people really wrap their arms around it to make it successful. And so, we've got a lot of participation to make it work. It's grassroots. It's not rich, rich and retired. I got a day job, my wife says, you know, what are you doing? We're just doing this because I had a heart attack 16 years ago, and I got six stents. So, for me, it's all about saving lives, you know, and things, and that's why we're doing this. It's because of that, Wendy and her group, you guys, you've already got two volunteers that stepped up, which is fantastic, I think, so it's exciting to see.
Just one, one question about the $360, you know, the first two years are free for the monitoring. Is that 360 per unit?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to clarify on that.
The other cities have all built it into their budget two years out, based on the number of units that they've had so far.
And that's my next point. Since, I know when I talked to Officer Paul, he said that it should work to write that into the city budget, and that's why I'm hoping you guys will take that leadership and write that into the, I'm not sure what part of the budget, but to cover the batteries, pads, monitoring after those two years, and like from then on out, because that'll show that the city's involved with it, and that'll help with the cost. Otherwise, we'd have to find, be raising money continuously after all this, which we still can do to help with that, but if the city does their part and says, instead of buying a whole unit, we'll cover the cost from then on out, that'd be the perfect.
The only, the only other thing we may need is, is there is a save, you have to get new pads. The AEDs last for years. I know that the officer in Eric in Cold Spring said he had like 12 times to use his AED, he just keeps putting new pads on there and using it. So, that doesn't happen, things too often. Batteries are good for five years.
And really, the cost of it doesn't compare to saving someone's life. If someone's life is saved, that's the end goal, and if this can save one life, that's better than people dying by not having an AED locked up in a building that was right next to them, which they couldn't get into.
You know, are these prices accurate?
Yes.
And that's the save station and the AED?
No, so that's the save station, the AED, we have a grant for $850, which is half price of what the, if you're buying money internet or whatever, that's, the going price is $1,700. We can only sell that to a nonprofit, we could either run it through, oh, through the city as an example, that's a great part of it. This is the, what the AED looks like that we're currently working with, this is the fifth tech, and it actually has a video in there that talks you through and shows you what to do, where to place it, and things, so it's different than the one we used in our demonstrated, demonstrations.
So, let me follow this. The AEDs we have to purchase with this?
Nope, not necessarily. Could use your own that you currently have. But if you wanted to put new ones out there, and you get them for half price based on the grant that we got, and you can get as many as you, as you want right now.
You can take a business, for example, in the industrial loop, there's a few of them out there. If one of those businesses wanted to move it from inside their building to outside their building, that's feasible.
Okay.
On the map that we showed, there's, in some cases, AEDs very close to each other. Makes sense to have one outside and leave the other one inside. The issue is making sure people are aware of it.
The other thing that is great publicity for Painesville, which also, a lot of publicity should come from this project, because new stations have been covering all different towns and cities that have been doing this, so we should be getting great publicity from this. We can also register to be a heart safe community, and there's a list attached on there of different places that are heart safe communities. This just makes it up, when people want to live in Painesville, this attracts more people to live in Painesville, more people to come visit Painesville, things like that, because this can be publicized as something that Painesville has to offer, we're a heart safe community, and that's something we can register once we get these in place.
Question about, I know Alicia's jumped up to be involved, is this something that the Public Safety Committee could handle, or would you think it'd be best to have a separate committee put together to, just to look specifically at this?
Steve Sting, mention that.
Um, Steve Sting, I worked with way at the beginning of this project as one of my advisors to help learn, for me to learn more about AEDs and just learn more about how Painesville operates things, and he did mention that, that committee would be probably a good idea to use that committee as the committee that we go through or partner with.
You might want to have some community members too, because
Yeah.
In St. Joe, then we went to the city council meeting, and that, that night, they said, we'll buy one, the next day, they called me and said, we'll buy two. Then they called me next day and said, a citizen's seen it on TV, and she's buying four of the save stations in honor of her husband who passed away. He used to be a councilman and was a city pharmacist, or the city pharmacist, so in his name, she ended up, she ended up jump-starting St. Joe with four of the units, and before long, you had other people buying them, and the brewery, or Manhattan Group, made a beer called It Saved the Day, and for every beer they sold, now they've got one on the outside of their, their facility, so, I mean, there's so many, it's a groundwork effort, you just don't know what, you know, who wants to join it.
Yeah, basically, tonight is me coming to you guys and giving you all this information. You guys have connections and different people you know that you can talk to and at least spread the word in Painesville. The more people that know about this, the better, and the more people that find out about this, the better publicity Painesville gets about this, and the more people willing to help me fundraise, and different organizations coming forward and saying, we'll donate money, we'll buy one, things like that. The faster it goes, and the faster we can save someone's life.
I could clarify one thing on the pricing. The red boxes are totally AED on all three of them are identically the same, the technology's the same. The difference between the starting one is the top panel is not lit, so you need to externally light that, it has to be in a well-lit area. The wall unit and the tower unit are identical in that the top cap of that is internally lit, it's LED lit. You can go to Wake Park or Sartell.
You can go to Wake Park or Sartell and see them. They attract your attention. So the difference really is the technology is the same in all of them. Basically, the exterior and the lighting function is what's different. In some cases, you might want a low-key situation or not as, I would say, bright, but this, this does stand out. The other thing you'll notice on there is that the AED pulsates or lights during the night off and on so that it attracts attention. The other thing that we've done, that we haven't talked about is that we have directional signage that with an arrow left or right or straight ahead. We've, Stern's County, on any county highway, their county highways, no problem. The state, we have some issues there. It's a federal highway and they won't allow them. But townships, that sort of thing, anybody in the city normally has no problem with that. Typically, they're mounted on an existing structure that you have in place. So it's all part of the awareness. If you have an AED on the building, it is still, it's going to be in their face. They've got to see it and then aware of it so that when the event happens, that they know where it's happening.
Okay. Alicia, are you willing to find a group?
Um, I'm certainly willing to help with the process. I'm I would hesitate to put this under the umbrella of a city board or ad hoc board, just because I think we should be able to reach out to citizens and community and
Yeah, I know, like a public safety, we don't, we don't meet that often. It is kind of community-based, but we don't meet that, that often. And like I said, Steve Sting is on there and if he's willing to help, we've got, you know, members from downtown that you could pull from that group. I'm sure that they would be, you know, interested in something like that.
One thing that's very successful in Richmond and Cold Spring is the Chamber sponsored an event where we made a presentation and that's where we got a lot of the committee members going from there. So that's another. The Chamber would be a good jumping out point. We still want Caitlin to be in charge.
Yeah, oh yeah.
For her gold award. We, she needs a little direction is what we're saying, right?
Also, basically, I think you, you'll meet with Alicia and you and her can come up with something.
Talk a little more and bring some stuff out.
Yep.
And we're available anytime for any meetings, that sort of thing, at all.
Okay.
So I don't think I, unless anyone else has any other questions, I don't have anything else. You guys heard a lot and know more information about it now. So thank you for hearing about it.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I know that some of us have been aware already, you know, that you've been working with Tom and our Lions Club has talked a little bit about it and the other, I think, string lines have been involved. Sartell, obviously, because they got their name up on your poster there.
Where else is it? Bell Ray or New Mearney? New Mearney ended up putting one up there. Another Lions Club is, Art Rawley's in Stock Rapids, the Lions Club.
Oh, yeah.
That's going out this week.
They just, we just came in. We're installing that next week. So, yeah.
Tinville.
Tinville, that's it.
Can you leave your contact information for me?
So I want to say this. Go home tonight and you should ask yourself, where's the closest AED to your house?
Squad car.
Squad car, yeah. I don't think we need anything official right now. We'll just proceed under the assumption that we'll get a report back on potential locations and look at costs.
I'll have Caitlin reach out to you.
Yep.
For Alicia's information. Will you pick a coffee? Are you sure you're getting it?
Yep.
She's probably the smartest one in the bunch here, is your daughter.
Has better hips than I do.
Mitch, you know, one thing we forgot to mention was there's pre-training. For, for every unit that comes, advocates, want to speak to that for a second?
Well, we've done, as part of our pricing, again, includes installation, plant, electrician, I don't know. There's also a training session for every AED unit. And so we would, we partnered with the St. Cloud firm. They come out and, you know, have a group of 15,000 people and go through all the training.
And part of my goal of our project, I'm required to have at least three events. One being like high school, middle school students, so my age population and then a random age population and then more elderly age population. So that's part of my goal of award requirement is to do those presentations. So that's another way to educate the public and just let them know about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We'll, we'll stay in touch, too. Yep, thank you. All right, then on to item B. Everybody got your calendars out. Looking at a work session in June and also attached with that, a community working session. We have some dates here. Potential. I would prefer not the first two. I cannot do the 16th. Anything else?
Pretty, pretty good.
Any other no's?
I can do any of those.
No to the 30th.
No the 30th? What was that, Alicia? I didn't catch.
I'm available for any of those.
Okay. Want to do the 18th and get it over with?
Thursday, the 18th?
Thursday, the 18th.
Yep, there's no town country days anymore. That's the schedule there, so we should be good.
No bus driving.
Yeah. All right.
Are we doing both the community working session and the special council session?
Yep.
Okay.
Same time. Same day. Five and six.
It starts at five.
Yep.
So I'll move to set to Thursday, June 18th, 2020 at 5:00 PM for a special city council community working session and at 6:00 PM for a special city council working session.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore to set Thursday, June 18th at 5:00 PM for a special city council community working session and a 6:00 PM special city council working session discussion. All favor I?
I.
Pose? None? Not carried. All right. 2020 liquor licenses, that's actually part of the, the COVID part, but I asked staff to put down who is pays for liquor licenses within city, both the on-sale and Sunday liquor and the 3-2 beer and off-sale, just for information at this point in time, because we don't know how long this is going to last or if the council is even interested in some type of an adjustment for non-use of those licenses during this time.
I think I am for the months that they were closed to no reason of their own.
I agree with that. Maybe just a simple half-page application saying, "I'm asking for reimbursement for these months" and so we can take action on it.
And pro, just divided it up by 12 and what's just $266 a month for the 32?
Yep. Yeah, it's, yeah, at this point in time, it's just something to think about because
In about three months, which is a quarter. So 25% refund right now.
But it's still continuing and under, you know, not under full operation either, so
Be a different percentage.
Yeah. You know, and like bowling alleys missed out on most of their full season for that. So, yeah, it's going to be a little different for each of the businesses.
I think a little one-page form.
Yeah.
I mean, I might even be open to just a partial reimbursement for like Queen B, who can sell six-packs, but I'm sure she's not doing near the volume of this before. So.
And like QuickTrip is open.
Right. Yeah.
So.
I think that's probably where the, some kind of application would probably be helpful.
And I don't imagine that QuickTrip would fill out the form and send it to us anyway.
Yeah.
Probably not.
For the $15. And I guess
Baseball club, we don't know.
Like you said, bowling alley or the baseball club, one are the normal months of operation, but it's not a year wrong. So if it's a six-month business and they're closed three, we might want to look at 50%.
Baseball club might not have any activities at all. They might be shut down for the whole summer. We don't know that yet.
Let's hit a one-page form and they may as well not submit it until they're fully open.
I, I would advise that.
And we'll look and see how, you know.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, find out if the council was interested in doing something. So well, somebody can work on some type of a form. We'll have time to do that.
Volunteer Belinda to do that.
Yep. That's what she gets for having new plans.
She's not here tonight.
Yep. Okay, then the next one is our typical waiving the monetary limits on municipal tort liability. Now, Bill, do you have anything to add to that? That's just pretty cut and dried that we do that each year unless the council wants to not waive that.
That's true. That's correct. And, you know, for a number of years, our insurance representative came and would make a little presentation about it. But, you know, I think most cities decide not to waive the tort liability and I know your, your insurance company advises you not to do that. You don't want to assume more liability than you have under state law.
I move to not waive the monetary limits on municipal tort liability established by Minnesota statute, section 466.04 and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by a handful of people down there. I think Alicia was probably a little louder. To not waive the monetary limits on municipal tort liability established by Minnesota statute 466.04 and authorize the mayor to sign the document. Discussion. All favor I?
I.
Pose? None? Not carried. Okay, and the next item is the mortgage satisfactions there. As the staff is continuing to go through those, there's a handful listed there who are looking for a motion to approve the small cities mortgage satisfactions for those named individuals and company in one place there.
I'll make a motion to approve the Sterns County HRA small cities mortgage, mortgage satisfactions for Harold and Patricia Kealan, Christine Fluga, Ryan and Mindy O'Kinnock, Marilyn Blonder, Luke Walther, Alfred and Susan Holstad, Bradley and Stephanie Sartwall, James and Valerie Stanger, Alice Gronley, Patrick and Amy Flanders, times two, Painesville Mutual Insurance Company, Sheila and Paul Shepherd, and Joseph Walk, Chin and Woods.
That's close, Walk, Chin and Woods.
Sorry, I'm on that one.
Yep, that's fine. Was there a second?
Yes, I saw.
Sean did?
I thought I did.
You thought you did, okay.
I was second.
Okay. It's official now. Motion and a second. Discussion. All favor I?
I.
Pose? None? Not carried. Okay, the next thing is the emergency relief loans. We've had a couple that came in. Requests. And we have one from Cronus Lanes requesting the $10,000 and one from Bill and Nancy Fox requesting $20,000. EDEP Finance Subcommittee and EDEP have reviewed the applications and recommend approval. Anybody have any questions, comments, anything to add? I know staff did some additional work on getting some clarification on one, but.
When the EDEP Finance Committee, Committee Men and the EDEP Board, the two questioned have no issues whatsoever for anything in the past. They've both been affected by COVID-19. We set this fund up for this. We had no issues whatsoever.
Did we, did we have a max on these loans?
Because it's a $20,000 max.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the COVID-19 emergency relief loans for Cronus Lanes in the amount of $10,000 and Bill and Nancy Fox in the amount of $20,000.
Second. Motion by LeVoe, seconded by Rinkie to approve the COVID-19 emergency relief loans for Cronus Lanes in the amount of $10,000 and Bill and Nancy Fox in the amount of $20,000. Discussion.
I just have one more comment on Fox's. It probably qualifies on both ends because he is doing some remodeling and putting in an additional employee. And like I've said before, that is the main function of EDEP, so I have absolutely no problem with either one.
And I think in his case, too, or their case, too, they had made some investments before this COVID-19 hit, so. Any other discussion? All favor I?
I.
Pose? None? Not carried. And the next one is the 2020 election ballot drop. And if I get down to the bottom here, they've asked, or Sterns County has asked us to become an absentee ballot drop-off location for the 2020 election. We're looking for approval to do that.
I move to allow Painesville City Hall to be an absentee ballot drop-off location for the 2020 election.
Second. Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore to allow Painesville City Hall to be an absentee ballot drop-off location for the 2020 election. Discussion.
Is, is that just a box that people drop their ballots in? Or does, or does it require staff interaction?
It says a lockbox would be provided to keep the ballots in.
There is no revenue generated and definitely no expense involved in staff, except Kristen will have to keep, like, a spreadsheet of the names. That's it. Submit that. But it's not like helping them fill out an application or a lot of counter summits. Drop it off and record a name.
Okay.
So there's no revenue coming in for it and there's no, essentially no expense.
The colonial just gave us a thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure. Anything else? All favor I?
I.
Pose? None? Not carried. Okay, on to all business, COVID-19 on page 32. Mr. Fred, anything to update us on there?
Uh, last week, we received paperwork from, or an email from Sterns County Emergency Management about reimbursement through FEMA. So me and Belinda are going to sit down probably next week and start figuring out what we can get reimbursed for. You know, the supplies, the Plexiglas, my wages for emergency management and stuff like that. So it's the only update I have right now.
Okay. We had a small cities board meeting today and that was one of the, the things that was discussed about the two or three different proposals that the state has for filtering that money down to, to cities. And the one thing that was stressed is that, well, we're not sure what that amount is going to be, but that was stressed is that keep track of whatever expense you can, because whatever funds come it can only be spent, this is from the Federal Cares Act, can only be spent on COVID-19 related expenses. So you can't use it to, you know, bump up anything else or cover any lost revenue from like liquor licenses or whatever. At this point in time, it's, you know, projected to only be related expenses.
Correct.
And they said, even if you designate a staff person to handle everything COVID-wise, you know, which is difficult to do in a smaller town, but if, you know, a bigger, bigger city, you probably could have someone that's, you could actually use part of the salary or wage, too, but.
Yeah, we're going to look through all the paperwork and see what we can do and start.
Yep.
We've been keeping track of everything we've bought.
The blue tape, the, well, we already had the, all the masks. We had an inventory to replace all those. Yep.
This would apply for the liquor store also, I presume.
The, like, hand sanitizer and cleaning supplies we purchased for them.
Mm-hmm.
Lexi glass.
Yep, yep.
I had asked Belinda last week if we could close down the counter just like on a Wednesday for a couple hours or something, only for the most vulnerable to come in. And she was going to call DMV to see if that was possible. Does anybody know if she got around to that or if baby came?
Uh, Belinda was not in today. She, baby came with the weekend.
Microphone?
Belinda was not in today and I believe she forwarded that to Melinda to research and I do not know if Melinda got a call back or an email back on that. So that is still being investigated. Belinda was not in today, and I believe she forwarded that to Melinda to research. And I do not know if Melinda got a call back or an email back on that. So that is still being investigated. We were very busy today. The line was to the door where Sean is sitting most of the day. The last person waiting on the counter this afternoon was at five minutes to five. We have heard a lot of compliments on the way it's set up. People are very patient. They're very respectful of each other's space. They're polite to us, but there is a long wait. And we're trying to pre-inform people when they come, if they call, that there's going to be a wait. Be patient. And we're, the call volume has doubled because they want to know for sure if we're open. They want to know if there's a line. They want to know if they have to wear a mask. But for the most part, it's going well, but it's very, very busy.
So I would make a motion then to let the interim city administrators utilize their discretion to set certain hours for vulnerable individuals if permitted to do so by the state.
Second? Okay, we have a motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore to allow the administrators to set a time for, what was the word? Vulnerable?
Vulnerable individuals.
Individuals only.
Yep.
At the counter at City Hall, correct?
Yeah, similar to what grocery stores are doing.
Okay, any discussion on that?
I would like to include in there, like, the grocery stores at 8:30 to 9:30.
Well, that would be up to the staff to...
For a store.
I guess you, we can talk it over and...
They'll be at the grocery store.
My only concern on setting a time by motion is what if the state has certain restrictions that we might not know about?
Okay, well, the motion was to allow administrators to determine that, correct? Correct. Anything else? All in favor? I?
I.
Oppose? None? Not carried? Okay, what about the outdoor dining? Bill, do you have any guidance on that? I know staff had looked at some of the restrictions that we have.
Well, I mean, the only guidance I have is that I think cities are adopting a variety of ways to accept applications for temporary variances from restrictions that might be in place. I think, you know, the state liquor laws limit how creative you can get in some situations. Some cities have even have adopted ordinances to address, I think because of this situation, but they felt like as long as we're in it, we might as well put something in our ordinance that would address future problems like this in case this arises again. But, but yeah, I mean, you certainly can, can do some things. You're limited, I think, a little bit by some other rules about how, how much you can take up of your sidewalk area, but you can allow liquor license holders to expand their space and on the property that they own or rent. They, they have to, you know, they have to define that area on an application, and that has to be sent in by the city to a couple of different state agencies to track that information. I understand the state tends to scrutinize cities and make sure that those, everything is being sent on properly to them, but, but we could, we could do it. I mean, we could do it either by ordinance, or we could think about if, if the council was inclined to look at a different way of doing it, we could, we could do that as well. But that's what cities are doing is they're both in the, in the dining area and in, in our particular situation, I think most of the dining facilities also that, that are, you know, going to be serving people outside are also liquor establishments, so I'm sure they're going to want their liquor license to cover that area.
What, did I, did I hear you correctly? You were kind of going in and out there in that it has to go to the state if we allow them to expand their area, or is that just a city decision?
The city gets to decide, but we have to be sure we send it in.
Oh, just have to send it in?
Yes.
Okay. Because we're coming up on June 4th, and I have a hunch that both our establishments are quite interested in knowing what the city is going to do for them to make a decision as to how they proceed.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and I don't know, I'm sure our meeting schedule doesn't get us another meeting before that date comes, but I could, I could certainly work on putting together a draft ordinance. I don't know if there's a committee that would look at that in the meantime or how you would want to proceed with that, but I think it makes sense to, you know, to look at allowing them to expand. And they, they're, you know, they're going to have to deal with their insurance company, and their insurance company is going to have to agree to insure in that expanded area. And, you know, we have to go through all those hoops, but it certainly can work.
Is the limitation 50 people?
50 people, yes. Maintaining the social...
At one time.
At, at one time. No more than four per table, except a close family or immediate family, six.
Yeah.
So, you know, and as it is now, both those patios that are defined, there's no way they could get 50 people in those closed areas.
Yeah, I haven't, and I haven't looked too much at the downtown facilities outside area to expand in, you know, the, the Legion hasn't big enough parking lot. I assume that they could make a contiguous area that would, you know, that would work. It's not going to be pretty, but it would work. You know, they could put tables in part of the parking lot. You know, and they just have to get their, their insurance company to expand their area for their outdoor service coverage and, you know, and we have to figure out some kind of an application, but I think we can approve those kinds of things.
Just a question, and I don't know if Jennifer knows this, but like for Queen B, their, their defined area is only the patio area. It does not go all the way to Business 23?
I believe it is the fenced area right now.
Fenced area.
So they would want to expand, you know, the old volleyball nets where, or maybe up to their landscaping. They might want to consider that if they want to expand.
So in theory, both entities could probably get close to that 50 max if they were allowed to expand on their own property without going into the sidewalk. And there's not a whole lot of room in the sidewalks either, because ADA requirements are coming to play too, don't they, Bill?
They do. And I'd have to, I'd have to look at those, but I know there's a certain width of sidewalk that has to be available for pedestrian traffic.
I'm certainly up for considering anything, but I'd like to see a request, kind of like with the liquor license, just so that we know what's going on and we don't pass a blanket resolution that's not going to help.
Since we don't meet again until after the 4th, is there something that can be done, Bill, to allow the administrators to grant something contingent on council approval? You know, and I guess I wouldn't do that unless the council was comfortable in, you know, allowing others, you know, at least consensus in the council that, you know, based on that both entities have the space to do it on, on private property and to work it through their insurance company and understand they have to mark it off?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it could be doable, and I just think we have to have a checklist that meets all the requirements so that we know the administration is, is, you know, not giving a blessing to something that doesn't meet the, all the requirements, but I think that'd be fine.
I think the requirements are, are out there, aren't they? Aren't they, Tom?
Yes.
Yep.
Should we have the building inspector help them lay it out or just let them go on their own?
I'm sure we'd have to have a building inspector, because it's an outdoor area, or not, you know, marked off, roped off.
I think the big thing that they're going to have to have is a fenced-in area. Wherever they expand to, if they're serving alcohol in that area, they're going to have to be fenced in.
I don't, that's just our requirement, isn't it?
No, it's for the outside state stuff. It's got to be a designated marked area for alcohol with the state for their liquor license.
Yeah, marked, but not necessarily fenced, correct? I don't know if Bill could hear you.
I'm pretty sure it's fenced.
Yep.
I'm pretty sure the state requirements are it's a fenced-in area.
Bill, does that...
I, I haven't looked at that, but I, I can't believe there's not a requirement that there be some restriction on access to the area where alcohol is served. I mean, I would, I'd be surprised if there wouldn't be some enclosure requirement. I don't think it would have to be fancy, but I think there's got to be some marking off of that area. I would think the insurance would require it as well.
Okay. Okay, so if they met all the requirements, insurance requirements, other requirements?
And I could try to put something together and circulate it to the members of the council over the next few days here so we could, yeah, at least people could look at something, but we, you know, we have to be, we, we can't violate the open meeting law, but I could, I could send up stuff. We can't reply to all, but I think people could give me feedback individually.
Could we have a...
If they thought there was something that was out of line that I, that I'm thinking we want to require.
Could we have a special COVID-19 lunchtime council meeting?
We, no, we, we could. I'm kind of figuring that the, the entities will need to know, or when could we meet the earliest? Because they need to, you know, determine if they're going to be open to, you know, and the one, and the disclaimer here is that, you know, the American Legion, there's three of us up here that are members, you know, we're not, that's not a conflict of interest, but, you know, financially or by law anyway, but, you know, there are three Legion members here, and I do know that the Legion, you know, being closed, you know, they would have to, you know, seek staff, order food. Queen B's has at least been open and has been, you know, getting product, product in, so it's not like we can act on one day and they can jump the next.
When are they allowed to be open again?
June 4th.
On Thursday.
Not the first? I think it's the first.
Was it the first? Oh, I thought it was Monday the 4th. I know, I know, there was a...
Monday the 1st.
The, Monday the 1st, okay.
Okay, Monday the 1st.
June 1st. Well, that's quicker, yeah.
Which is like...
Less than a week. So I, I mean, I guess my stance is that we need to do whatever we need to do to support our local businesses at this point.
You think they'd have it ready by Friday if we had a 15-minute meeting at lunchtime or not? Today's what day is it today?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
Is that...
It's a Tuesday, Friday.
Does that give us enough time to post a special?
Yeah, because one of the days will count, so three-day posting, I could do it tonight for leave.
Are both in businesses interested?
Well, I, you know, if I would, if I was one of the business owners, it would depend on what I could do.
You can, there's a lot of uncertainty if your insurance and everything and health...
But if we don't give them the option.
Right, but if you put the line to it, it might not be worth it. Well, if they say we're not interested, then we don't need to go any further. If they are interested, then we need to...
Well, yeah, I'm using the, the Legion as an example. That's got a patio where they could probably get four tables on there. I'd have to look and see, you know, what my expected revenue is from those four tables, hopefully being in use all the time as compared to having that whole area between there and the Schackle Building available, you know. How much staff do I need to put on? How much product do I need to order? I think, you know, if we're going to just allow them to have what their, you know, their defined area is now, I'm not even sure if it's going to be open or...
Well, no, I'm, I'm not, I'm saying to pursue the 50 and room for the 50, but they still might not be interested.
Right. Well, they might not.
Yeah, but the council would have 50, depending what your insurance does this and that. You know, if we need fencing, they might just say, oh, we'll stay closed another month.
Right, but if we give them the information, then if we waste 15 minutes of our time for our two companies in Painsville, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I am too. I, I think we can put that out there and then let them make their decision, but they, then at least they know, hey, the city's behind us and the city's supporting us.
Yep.
I guess they have.
Let them both know that we're interested in allowing them to go to the back zone that they physically can go to under the constraints, you know, of the executive order, of the insurance, of the existing liquor laws. We will go as far as we can.
So Friday?
Friday.
Lunchtime special meeting.
Noon or 11:45?
Noon.
Noon.
Burton?
This Friday.
This Friday?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, I mean, to Neil's point though, I would like to hear what people are requesting. I did reach out to one business owner and see if they had a request, something that we could hear help with, and I never heard back. So I'm a little curious as to what the requests are, what we can do, so if there's something, let us know.
No, and it's a matter of do they have enough tables to put out and, you know, are they putting them in? And I've even, you know, on the, the list, there was one, one small city that was allowing use of the city picnic tables because, you know, parks were, their parks were closed.
So do you want us to reach out to those two entities and invite them to come? Because I'm not aware of anybody physically asking yet, unless Ron or Belinda has, have been confronted.
It would be nice to send them the guidelines.
Yep.
And then, yeah, I mean, I guess if you, if we could reach out to them and then if they say, no, we're not interested because it's not cost-effective for us, then, you know, we can cancel our meeting, but...
And they're more than welcome to be here. That's fine.
Sure. Okay, anything else on COVID-19?
What time was that Friday?
Noon.
12:00.
Yep.
We're just out the splash pad.
Oh, yeah, splash pad.
I guess at this time it is, well, by the end of the week, it will be ready to go. I think everyone's well aware. It is a weather-dependent facility. I guess, you know, signs have been posted, and I don't know what else we can do. You know, the water obviously is not recycled here. It does go down the drain, so that's not a concern. I think the only thing the league had is the social distancing, and when you get that many around there. But I guess I would be fine with just leaving the signs posted and opening it up and...
I would agree. I think it's probably safer than the playground equipment.
Probably.
Looking at that when it's supposed to be.
Yep.
The weather is supposed to turn in our favor here shortly.
So typically, we would open it up?
Typically, we would have it open.
Okay, so we don't need council authorization to do so?
Nope. I, I'd open it and let families decide. We've lost so many decisions the way it is. The few we have left, let's go.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, now anything else? Okay, then on to item B, city administrator update. And we've got the revised timeline there, including final interview dates of October 19th and 20th. That sounds like a long way away.
That sounds like a long way.
Though we're looking for a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion to approve that. Just as stated.
A second.
Can we discuss for a few seconds while I check?
Yep, we do have a motion by Hertzberg, seconded by... Yep, we do have a motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau, and it's open for discussion. Go ahead.
That's fine.
Oh.
I just needed to check a date, I'm good.
Oh. And like, November 23rd or something is the start date, from what I recall in there?
Hopefully.
Anything else? All in favor I?
Aye.
Posse? None that carry? And the last one is the updated job position points on page 36.
I move to approve the updated safe job evaluation points for each city position.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau to approve the updated safe job evaluation points for each city, city position that is on, listed there, discussion?
Now, the, the two that are going up a pay grade, when is that effective? I guess that would be up to the councils.
Mm-hmm. There wasn't a suggested date here.
I will amend my motion to include an, an effective date as of the start of the next pay period.
Okay with you there?
Yeah, that's, that makes sense.
Okay, so that is then a motion to approve the updated safe job evaluation points for each city position, effective the start of the next pay period. Discussion? All in favor I?
Aye.
Posse? None that carry? Informational, we have the liquor store report, West Central Sanitation monthly report for May, City of Olivia Capital Financial Plan, a comparison there, June and July game schedules. And then we will be going into closed session to discuss an offer of real property located at 475 Kira Lane. It's out in Heatherwood, Lap 3, and we will be having our city attorney stick around and Mr. Mergen, of course, and Jennifer Welling stick around also. I'll go recess, get everything set up.